Welcome, everyone. I call the February 16th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are study sessions on middle housing and the transfer of development rights at Canyon Park. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. As with our previous meetings, the commissioners and staff will be participating via Zoom. During this Zoom meeting, the chat and question functions will not be available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comments section on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit those comments to three minutes. Under Governor Inslee's proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, this meeting will be held remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing and orally. The Imagine Bothell Notice, City Website, and Tonight's Agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff by 3:00 PM today. A video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to ensure the materials they are referencing, which materials they are referencing, so that everyone may follow along. Excuse me. Those who provided advance notice are able to make comments under the audience comment participation of the meeting. Excuse me. Email was encouraged and will be acknowledged, and we did receive one email earlier today. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Kurd.
Present.
Commissioner Westerback.
Present.
President. Commissioner Robson.
Present.
Commissioner Dodd.
Present.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Present.
And in addition, we have Community Development Director Michael Cotterman and Senior Planner David Boyd and Nathan Lamb. We also have guests Mike Stanger of Arch and Sierra Carson of OTAC. Thank our guests for being here and for the assistance they will provide us. So lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking and unmute when you want to speak. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you wish to speak, please indicate this by holding up a card or using the raise hand function or otherwise trying to get my attention, and I will scan the ribbon to try and identify you. When you are called, this will help avoid having two people speak at the same time. And when you're called on, please identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. And again, please mute your microphone when not speaking. So the first agenda item we have is public comment. In keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has adopted, has accepted public comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. This is time for items not on tonight's agenda. We will be welcoming comments during, at the end of the presentations later for agenda items. The Director Cotterman, please let us know if there are any comments received.
In, none in addition to the one that was forwarded to you earlier today, Mr. Chair, that you noted. And there are two people in the attendee, I know one is going to wait until after we get to the missing middle housing discussion. The other had indicated did not wish to speak this evening, but I'll ask just in case, Tyler, if you've changed your mind, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone who wishes to speak at this time, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you then. With that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the February 2nd meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Dodd.
I move to approve the minutes for the February 2nd meeting.
All right, there's a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Kurd.
My second emotion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt the minutes to the February 2nd meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Looking across the commissioners and seeing no indication of interest in discussion. All in favor of adopting those minutes as proposed? And looking, seeing all six commissioners raise their hands in approval of the minutes, so the minutes of the February 2nd meeting are adopted as proposed. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is new business. Is there any new business? Director Cotterman, anything for us?
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. So with that, we'll move to our items on the agenda, beginning with middle housing. I believe we have Senior Planner Boyd here, who will discuss it with us, starting with how the missing became missing.
Thank you, Chair Karenin and Planning Commissioners. I apologize for my half-blacked-out screen, so I'm half here anyway. And I will share my screen, so you don't have to be distracted by that half-screen. And do a presentation. This will be, some of it will be familiar to you as I'm repeating some of the, what I shared with you back on November 13th. And it actually has been that long since we've had a sit-down meeting to discuss this issue. So anyway, we're very excited to, again, move forward with this, these important amendments and provisions for providing for a wider variety of housing options for the citizens of Bothell. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to continue the discussion on these potential amendments to enable a range of middle housing options. Started off when Council adopted the code amendments to allow corner lot duplexes and single-family zones, and Planning Commission had indicated in its findings that they would like to see see the city go further than that. And as part of that discussion, there was a suggestion that we do look at that up to fourplexes in single-family zones and a suggestion that perhaps we should allow them in new subdivisions only. So that's where we started. Other options potentially include cottages, garden court housing, expanded ADU options, and we're certainly, we're still investigating and open to other ideas of what might be included here. We're doing this work with funding from the Department of Commerce. We had some remaining funds from the grant that helped do the corner lot duplex and amendments. And then we received a Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant to supplement that. So we have about $60,000 and are very happy to continue working with OTAC. And we have tonight with us Sierra Carson from OTAC. And mostly to answer questions about the research memo that was included in your packet as attachment one. We're also, part of the OTAC team is still Christina Hayworth. And, but Sierra is going to be representing OTAC tonight. And then also, to answer any questions about some of the affordable housing provisions that may come up, Mike Stanger from Arch is here. I'm going to acknowledge both of them. A little background, and this is in your packet, but Housing Strategy Priorities included regulatory flexibility for innovative housing types like the ones that we're considering here tonight. Affordable housing with capacity increases, that's been the policy that we've been implementing as we do make changes that increase capacity, development capacity, whether it's increasing height limits, reducing setbacks, or reducing parking. And there's also a priority for affordable housing for families. And middle housing is, that's one of the target demographics for middle housing is housing types that are affordable for, especially for middle and lower-income families. So since the November 3rd study session, we've had our missing, our middle housing walking tour. And thanks again to BOPAP for helping put that together. We, there was a story on middle housing in KUOW that was spurred in part by taking that same tour, or at least portion of that tour. I did want to address a couple of things about that story. They highlighted a resident on 186 that indicated that she had been told that they wanted to build a backyard cottage on a duplex property and was told by the, she said by the city that that couldn't be done. That's not, in fact, the case. They could have built backyard cottage in that zone that's in the downtown transition density overlay. So they could have done, in fact, a backyard cottage in each of those. So I've reached out to that citizen and have a nerd back that would like to make sure that they know that they could move forward with a project like that. We've had council feedback from last night's docket discussion. And quite a bit of feedback from a session that went almost 11:30, if not past. And then we heard during that discussion that HB 1782, the legislation that was proposing state regulations regarding middle housing will not be advancing in this term. There is another bill, HB 1660, that is, that focuses on ADU regulations, and that is still in play. And one of the things that, one of the pieces of feedback that we got from Council last night was that some of the ADU items that we had had put as deferred items, they wanted us to move forward on those, and we were already planning to incorporate some potentially ADU regulations, code amendments, in this middle housing effort. And then, so in that time, we have brought OTAC under contract. And together with Arch and our own efforts have begun doing research on middle housing efforts elsewhere. That was one of the things that we wanted to have to present to, back to Planning Commission and also to Council as part of the docket discussion. And that, those, that's still ongoing. I think there's more research to be done. But that is in the memo for tonight and also attachment one that OTAC provided on their research. And that research looked at what's been going on in, at local jurisdictions, but also looking nationwide to Oregon, which passed statewide legislation allowing middle housing in single-family zones throughout the state, at least in growth areas throughout the state, and Minnesota, Minneapolis, Cincinnati. So we are looking at a lot of different approaches that have been taken and also looking at what the results have been. Unfortunately, these approaches are all quite recent. And so there isn't a lot of data on how they've been playing out, especially since many of them were enacted at the, at the beginning of the pandemic, which has probably had an impact on how that's playing out. I did want to include here this graphic from Seattle's ADU report and their recent amendments to their ADU regulations, which removed the owner occupancy requirement, which allowed not just a single ADU on a property, but two ADUs, both an attached and a detached ADU on single-family properties, and other changes with regard to size limits. Those were enacted in September of 2019. And you can see that there was a significant uptick in ADU production in Seattle in 2020 and in 2021. And the numbers there only represent two quarters. So there is some evidence here that some of these measures actually do have great increase in production. And then tomorrow, I'll be participating in a State of Housing in Bothell webinar that BOPAP and North Urban Human Services Alliance have organized. So there's, there is a lot of interest in this, in this topic, and I'm sure that middle housing will be a significant part of that discussion. Bear with me for a second here. So I'm going to quickly go through, again, some of the slides that kind of define middle housing. In a nutshell, the middle housing are house-scale buildings with multiple units in walkable neighborhoods. They fill the need for housing in between single-family homes and apartments. And these are two diagrams illustrating what middle housing is. This one by Opticos Design and Dan Perelak, who coined the phrase "missing middle housing", indicates a transitional zone between single-family zoning and more dense multifamily zones. But it can also be, middle housing can be scattered through a single-family area. It isn't necessarily confined to a transitional zone as shown in this diagram. I should note also that there is a webinar next week that I think several of you are participating in by Dan Perelak's partner at Opticos. And so there's additional opportunities to learn more about, about middle housing and their efforts in promoting it. So I'm going to go quickly through these examples. They can be side-by-side duplexes, shown in these examples, both with and without alley access, stacked duplexes. And one thing that has caught my eye in some of the discussion recently is that some of these types are, do provide better accessibility on the ground-floor units than your, our typical townhomes that are often, have the living spaces stacked on three floors. So I pointed those out on the captions here as well. Stack, stacked fourplexes, again, with the two bottom units, have an opportunity for accessibility. Obviously, these pictures have stairs in the front that definitely could have accessible entrances from the rear. Or for the, from the front with different designs. Cottage course, cottage court housing, which again could have accessible ground-floor units. Courtyard apartments, same thing, the lower units could be accessible units. Stacked threeplexes, again, I didn't, forgot to put the note, but the lower unit would be a potentially accessible unit. And then other types. In some discussions, middle housing includes somewhat larger stacked flat housing, multiplexes, medium-sized multiplexes, townhouse, townhomes, and live-work housing. And the live-work aspect brings out another aspect, not necessarily of middle housing, but as we talk about looking back at traditional single-family neighborhoods and learning from their lessons. Many of those, particularly in Seattle, there were, besides having middle housing options scattered among them, there were some commercial, small commercial spaces scattered throughout neighborhoods. I don't know that that's really in our scope here, but it may be something to consider in the future, possibly in the COB Plan Amendment, when we look at some of our neighborhood activity centers and whether we, whether there's a need for more of those to create what, another catchphrase in planning of late is our 15-minute neighborhoods, where you can walk to, to get to services within a 15-minute walk or bike ride. And as I said, micro-apartments could be thought of as part of the middle housing portfolio. And we are intending to include accessory dwelling units in our, in our discussion of middle housing. So here again is an example that I used last time of, to get at this question of allowing up to fourplexes in new subdivisions. This is a recent subdivision in West Hill, 20 lots. So we could look at regulations that would allow an increase of, in the overall yield by 10%, 15%, maybe 20%. There was some discussion of this last time. You know, we're open to other numbers and to allow up to fourplexes, possibly options for larger courtyard apartments, cottages, or stacked flats. And some questions are, should we limit the location of where those middle housing options could be? As we did with corner lot duplexes, or allow more flexibility? Should this sort of thing only be allowed near frequent transit? And should we retain the lot size limitations? One of the concepts of middle housing is that the envelope, the building envelope remains the same as for single-family housing. So in theory, the lot size could or should too. But some approaches do allow some variation. And again, should this only be allowed in new subdivisions? So in this case, if we went to 20%, this is a 20-lot subdivision that would allow an extra four lots, which could be achieved by building a fourplex on one parcel and a duplex of them on another, or doing four duplexes, or a mix of fourplexes, duplexes, and triplexes. The general feedback we got last time was that, I think we started at 10%. I gave an example of 10% and the comment was, maybe, maybe we need to go higher than that, to 15%. But we can certainly consider, I think, 20% is certainly within the realm of possibility. 20% is the maximum bonus you can get in our cluster housing subdivision for setting aside additional forested areas. So there is some precedent for that. And I'm going to circle back to all these questions at the end, so I'm going to, I'm going to plow through here and then have more discussion at the end. We talked about limits on building regulations, sticking with single-family dimensions or allowing some modifications, perhaps allowing modifications like we did for corner lot duplexes on structures that were non-conforming, allowing those, expansion of those non-conforming conformities, not allowing them to become closer to lot lines, but allowing the length to be extended. Talked about modifying parking regulations similar to what was done with duplexes. And another concept would be to count street parking. If there is street parking available, to allow that to count toward any required parking requirement. And then, as we did for corner lot duplexes, allow reductions based on proximity to transit trails. There was some talk about, and I think there was support for all of this, but I'm going to circle and get some confirmation. The discussion last time was pretty wide-ranging and somewhat free-form, so I wanted to make sure that we were capturing. So that's why we'll circle back to these. There wasn't a lot of support for design requirements, but there is one that we may want to talk about a little bit is the street presence. And one thing that Dan Perelak has talked about is, on a site that allows fourplex, for example, some developers might basically create a walkway along the side and have all of the entrances face the side rather than facing the street, rather than having two units facing the street and then another two units behind on an alley and perhaps some shared open space in between. So those are, and suggestion is that if you limit the depth of the building, maybe that's a way to ensure that you get that street presence in addition to just requiring entrances facing the street. I'm going to go through these pretty quickly because there's a lot of numbers, but this is just an example from Opticos Design's website of some of the standards that they suggest for different types of middle housing. So we talked also about affordable housing provisions and a couple of options. One would be to just assume that multiplexes will be more naturally affordable, which is essentially what we've done with ADUs. We've limited their sizes to make, to help ensure that they tend to be more affordable, but we don't have any real controls in place on that. And the threshold we've utilized to date in the city has been where we do have affordability requirements, they apply to developments of five units or more. So that's what we would, with, if that's a direction the commission wants to explore, and we would suggest that we should at least do the, do some analysis of that. We would work with our Arch to come up with some, what, to determine what those affordability percentages and levels would be. And we could consider a different threshold. There's nothing that five or more units isn't cast in stone. Kirkland recently did, made some middle housing amendments that have a threshold of 10 units before they apply affordability requirements. So just to recap the issues here, and then I've got two slides kind of outlining some questions that I'd like to try to have a more directed discussion and get a sense for whether there's consensus on the commission. Limiting middle housing and, well, limits on yield in new subdivisions. Any further thoughts on whether we allow a bonus of 10, 15, 20% or other thoughts on that? And I guess just the notion of whether we should limit these, this discussion to new subdivisions. At least one council member last night was inclined to do that. subdivisions, at least one council member last night was inclined to do that. Or, another threshold we could consider was only limiting, limiting these middle housing options to parcels that are within a half-mile of frequent transit, even outside of new subdivisions. And then, going back to get some more clarity on whether we want to strictly limit the size to single-family dimensions, or allow modest increases, possibly when, only when preserving existing structures. Whether we want to follow the direction we did with corner lot duplexes in terms of parking regs, and whether we want to count street parking, or, and here's where we have some overlap with the parking reductions near transit. Do we do, again, base that on proximity to transit and trails? And then finally, back to the design requirements, street presence, maximum depth. And then, just so we, you all know the full range of questions that I'm hoping to get feedback on tonight, and these have changed a little bit from the memo, because of the discussion last night, and the change in the state legislation, so. And the state could come back next year with new middle housing requirements, but we have grant money from Commerce to tackle this this year. I think there is, certainly is, interest in moving forward, and in a way, we can move forward doing what we think is right for Bothell, and trying to, to come up with something that will work well if the legislature does pass legislation, but without necessarily needing to wait to see where they land with that. So, the, I think the basic approach would be to consider allowing, with increased yield in new subdivisions, anywhere in the city, allowing up to fourplexes, and then allow up to fourplexes within a half-mile of transit or trails, similar to the corner lot duplexes. And then, just stick with our, outside of those radius, we would still have the allowance to do corner lot duplexes. That's kind of the, the most incremental approach would be, would be that, and we can certainly consider going beyond that. Another approach that I, that we are interested, staff is interested in looking at, is addressing impediments to middle housing in multifamily zones. We have come across some examples in Lower Maywood, one that, that we've discussed in the parking reductions discussion, where even on a multifamily zone lot, the density limitations are such that, that, that missing middle, middle housing options are fairly limited. So if we're gonna allow up to fourplexes in, in single-family zones, maybe we should consider allowing up to fourplexes on a single-family sized lot, in any single-family sized lot in multifamily zones. And then, similarly, we've, we've recently come across restrictions on infill in single-family zones, lots that are big enough to subdivide under the current zoning, but where they can't be subdivided just because of the various setback and separation and lot configuration rules in some, single-family zones. So, there may be some, some fairly minor changes in those regulations to allow more of that kind of infill development in single-family zones. And then, as I've said, we're proposing to focus a little bit more attention on ADUs consistent with the state legislation as it advances. So with that, I will open it up for questions, and then I would propose, and any public comment, and then I would propose that the discussion include going back, circling back to those specific questions, and focusing on those for at least a portion of the meeting. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Senior Planner Boyd, very informative, as always. Director Cotterman, I see you raised your hand first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering if it would be helpful at this point to have a little bit of discussion about the direction that we received from the council last night. I know Dave touched on it, but there's, there's a little bit more to that discussion, I didn't know if this, this would be the best time.
I think it would be. I, I don't know that we want to, I mean, we're gonna make the recommendations that we think are the appropriate recommendations, but being informed by what they said, I think would be useful, so why don't you bring us up to date?
Take that. I'll give a quick snapshot, and then if you want to expand on that, Dave, what, what we had laid out for council last night was really, there were four options, and this was not too long after we'd heard about the legislation not passing. So, one option was where we had started with just new subdivisions, short flats and long subdivisions, that we would only allow them there. The second one was to go with what the state was proposing, which was to do it within a half-mile, a walkable half-mile of frequent transit. A third option was to do both of those things, which was all new subdivisions anywhere in the city, and within that half-mile of frequent transit. And then the fourth was, look citywide. Just look across the board at all the single-family zones in the city, and see whether, you know, we would want to permit some affordable, I'm sorry, not affordable, some middle housing in any or all of those areas. And there was some discussion, quite a bit of discussion on the part of the council about that, and it was, there were some differences of opinion on approach, as you might expect, but the, where the majority came down was, let's start larger, let's look at citywide, and then narrow it down from there. So I know Dave talked this evening about some various approaches, so I think part of what we're looking for from the commission this evening is, what additional information and analysis would you like to help determine, you know, if you, if you want to narrow it down, if so, how and where? So Dave, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, the, one nuance is that at least one council member, I think, was ready right now to allow them anywhere. Two others said they, they felt like they needed more information, but they at least wanted to do the analysis on a broad, on a broad scale, and then narrow down as appropriate. And, and I think I mentioned, one council member was in favor of just limiting, limiting them to new subdivisions, another one felt that new subdivisions plus near transit were both worth looking at. And there were two council members that were not there.
Right, yep. No, thanks for adding that, David, that's, that's good information. As you can tell, we ran the gamut, and the, the direction of the majority was, look at the big picture, the broader approach first, do some analysis of that, have the planning commission consider that, and then come back with a recommendation, and the council will have more of a discussion about how far they want to go at that time. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. I'll spare you the other three and a half hours of discussion that we had last night.
You can share that later. Thank you, Commissioner Dodd.
Thanks, Chair. I took way too many notes, so I'm not going to hit every point that I wanted to hit, at least not right now, but I think the most important thing to me is just addressing what I feel like the story we hear from people who live here a lot, sorry, is, I'm really worried that if we limit this to new subdivisions only, we're going to miss the people who own homes throughout the city, who are growing out of those homes, who want to move relatives into their homes, who then can't turn that into a duplex or a triplex, who are, let's say they're empty nesters and they need more income. I mean, there's a lot of use cases that I worry we're gonna miss, and instead of being able to stay in their home in Bothell, turning it into one of these missing middle types, they're gonna have to sell it to someone who's gonna buy their neighbor's house too and subdivide it, and that's where we see that large transformation of neighborhoods that people really bristle up about when we talk about construction in Bothell. I really would want us to make it everywhere in Bothell, not just new construction, not just near transit. And when we say let's start incrementally, let's also remember that changing what's allowed is not going to change our city overnight. It's still gonna be, as people want to change their homes, it's still gonna be a slow change. We are not gonna be like suddenly a city of all duplexes. So, I just really want to put that out there for everybody to think about, is, when you think about the problems we're tackling, let's remember the people who want to stay where they are, but make their home evolve with them, and see that slow evolution in neighborhoods, instead of just, hey, my neighborhood's gone, and now there's a bunch of homes that are brand-new that nobody can afford that used to live here. Thank you, pardon the hyperbole, I know I'm sounding a little bit like Nextdoor, but it's, it's a real thing that is, I've seen living here my whole life, so it's a big concern.
Hey, other commissioners? Or Dave, did you have something?
I just wanted to say, there was some discussion last night, and oftentimes in the discussions, there's talk of what is, will developers actually build these? And, but it's, as Commissioner Dodd pointed out, it's, we're not just looking at what developers will build, but what homeowners might be able to do on their own lots. So, that's one distinction between missing middle housing and other housing types that I think's worth keeping in mind.
I think if we talk about new developments, which seems to be the easiest thing in a lot of people's minds, we are talking about what developers will do, because it's developers who are developing the new, new developments, to be real repetitive, and then I think you're really at the mercy of the market, and while it may be an easy check-the-box, we did something, I think it may have perhaps lesser results than some of the other actions, so that's kind of my gut reaction on that one. Director Cotterman, do you have a comment?
More point of order, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to remind the commission that we do have at least one person who would like to speak on this item, and at this point, I think we're looking for clarification questions from the commission, and then we'll hear from the speaker, and then come back to discussion on the part of the commission.
Thank you for getting us back on track. So any other clarifications, recognizing we will go back to the questions that Senior Planner Boyd has put before us. Commissioner Dodd.
I do have a question, sorry about my moment of feelings. So, for the maximum depth requirement, I would love to see some examples of what regulations around that would do to what is built, I feel like I can't quite wrap my head around that yet, to answer that question.
Other questions or clarifications? Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, thank you, Chair, Sarah Gustafson here, I have a big question that may be better addressed after our speaker. How would any legislation around missing middle coordinate with our current tree canopy requirements or laws? I'd love to hear what the current laws on the books are, and how the missing middle housing might be affected about, by this. And, let's see, just inspired by the people who came and spoke about the tree canopy last week.
I'll take a stab at that. The state legislation on middle housing didn't address tree canopy, as I, as far as I know, and, and so far, that's, we haven't proposed that in our approach, so generally, and we don't, right now, Bothell doesn't have any tree canopy regulations, our tree preservation regulations are based on preserving significant trees, trees of eight inches in diameter or more, so that translates into canopy, but, but we're not measuring it by tree canopy. And so that is another area that we had in the docket as a deferred item, that council indicated that they would like to move on, but I think they'll, I think there are two different layers of regulations that will work together, and, so, as of now, I'm not anticipating addressing tree canopy. One area where we might consider it in terms of middle housing regulations would be allowing some flexibility and setbacks in order to preserve existing trees.
And, thank you, Senior Planner Boyd, that's great for now, I might have a question later.
All right, others, or shall we hear from our public commenter? Why don't we bring them in and hear their feedback?
They're coming down the virtual hallway right now. So this is Karen Eastby with the Master Builders Association, Karen, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, yes, we can, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Okay, terrific, I will keep it brief. So hello, Chair and fellow commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and thanks Dave for your presentation, I enjoyed that, and I watched last night's meeting as well, and that was certainly a marathon. So my name is Karen Eastby, and I'm here representing the Master Builders Association, where I'm the Government Relations and Outreach Specialist. Just as background, our association of about twenty-six hundred members represents home builders, architects, tradespeople, and other professionals involved in the construction of homes. We have many members in Bothell, and we know that there's a critical need for more housing in our rapidly growing region, including in Bothell. And tonight, I just wanted to say that we support the thoughtful work being done on missing middle housing in Bothell, it's such an important piece of the housing puzzle, providing housing options that fit people's lives and budgets, and expanding housing choices for families in neighborhoods that are close to jobs, transit, schools, and parks, like I know that plays into my housing decisions, it's a major, it's a major thing, and missing middle housing is a great option, especially for younger professionals. We have been following the Bothell Planning Commission's work in this space, including raising the short flat threshold to nine, and allowing corner lot duplexes in single-family zones. So regarding your consideration of ways to further expand middle housing options in Bothell, including up to fourplexes, we are here to assist this work, and participate in the conversation however we can, including with resources and data. That's all from me, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eastby, for your, your input, we appreciate that. So with that, I think we begin the discussion. Dave, do you want to pull up the questions you were looking for feedback on? Perhaps we'll do that.
Yes, and while I do that, I also wanted to say that if there are any questions about the, the research that was included in either the memo or the, the attachment, the main memo or the attachment to the memo from OTAC, Sierra Carson is here to address those. One other thing, just Karen's testimony reminded me that we are planning a, as part of our outreach on this, we are convening our Development Services Advisory Group, and on, in a meeting that will be focused on, on middle housing amendments, so we are gonna be getting additional input from that group, and we're looking into other ways to reach out to other, other stakeholders in Bothell.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, Dave, for the interruption, I just wanted to note, we do have one other person, oops, excuse me, we do have one other person in the attendee room, just wanted to check and see if they wanted to speak as well.
All right, let's ask them.
So Tyler, if you wanted to speak at this time, please raise So um Tyler, if you wanted to speak at this time, please raise your hand. Uh, doesn't look like it, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, no problem. I want to be sure that we give those who are interested the opportunity to speak. All right, uh, so Dave, you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
No, um, but I can go ahead and uh attempt to lead us through some of these questions if you'd like. Um, so the first one has to do with uh getting a broader sense of where where uh commission stands on what kind of additional yield to allow in new subdivisions that incorporate um middle housing. Uh, like I said, last last time I I started with an example with a ten percent bonus. There was at least one commissioner uh suggested maybe fifteen percent would be better, but I think we could uh certainly consider uh um up to twenty percent. Like I said, the uh which would be the bonus that's allowed for for cluster subdivisions. Any, I'd like to get a broader sense for where commission stands on that.
So Commissioners, any, Commissioner Dodd?
Would it be um uh would it be crazy to do a higher yield near frequent transit and then a lower yield throughout the rest of the city? Is that, am I giving you a headache already, or how does that sound?
I think that's certainly a uh a justifiable uh approach. And we'd have to look at exactly how that would, how we would, how that would play out in in the code language, but.
Yeah.
I guess I would think maybe like thirty percent within a walkable half mile of frequent transit and then the twenty percent elsewhere. Just to encourage density where we can support it, I think makes sense, but really curious what other people think.
And again, that's referring to the new subdivisions. Okay, other Commissioner comments scanning back and.
Commissioner Curd has his hand up, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay, yes, Commissioner Curd.
Thank you. Uh, I'm realizing that the virtual hand is the same color as the wall over there.
It's in your light.
I will uh just raise my normal hand. Um, my question is more of a clarification. Um, hopefully Senior Planner Boyd can address clustering subdivision uh bonuses. Um, if they're twenty percent, can you expand a little bit about that? What does that mean? Can a developer get more than twenty percent of the zone capacity or up to twenty percent extra of the zone capacity just by clustering? Um, can you just elaborate?
Yeah, and I'm not uh super familiar with the clustering provisions, but basically there's a base level of um open space requirement to do a cluster subdivision, which allows you to reduce the lot size by fifty percent. If you go beyond that base level, uh um then in increments, you can get uh ten, fifteen, or twenty percent, up to a twenty percent increase in unit yield uh by, in in that case, uh for preserving additional uh forested area.
I see. So twenty percent is kind of the, um, that's the the baseline? Or is that the maximum?
Well, as far as unit yield, that's the maximum.
Okay.
And and the reason I'm using that as an example is uh we talked last time about one of the issues here is um, you know, if we just allow, well, uh, that um we need to be cognizant of uh how far we can push uh the increase in density without doing uh additional environmental analysis. And so that's an example of um where we were able to do that uh and still um without uh extensive environmental analysis in terms of the increased density. And and again, uh, not all uh developers doing subdivisions are gonna uh take this route. Uh, so uh, just as not all single-family owned owners are gonna uh create duplexes or triplexes, um, not all developers will do this. So they're the analysis wouldn't, is gonna assume that only a percentage of of property owners are gonna go this way.
Great. Okay, yeah, I'd like to see at least matching uh the bonuses offered by clustering. Just so that, I mean, we're trying to encourage um lots of maybe uh co-existent or co-existing uh benefits, both with clustering to protect open space and trees, as well as encouraging um density where it's supported, um, and encouraging community by um, you know, missing middle housing. Um, so I'd like to see at least if we're offering twenty percent bonus for clustering, matching that at least with the new subdivision yield.
Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you, Chair Karen. Um, Commissioner Curd asked my question. I am, but I have something to expand on a little bit. So um, I I actually ran through a project recently using the clustering and I realized it wasn't gonna do much for this particular project. Like you said, we we made it, maybe would have been able to add one home. It sounds like that's not, it's not gonna move the needle much if we just try and match clustering. Because say you've got five homes and you can basically add one more. Um, so it doesn't seem like that's in the spirit of the the sort of missing middle that we're going for. Like, it seems to me we'd want to start with being able to double the density. Like, I know in Snohomish County, they have a cottage code. And um, if you if you adhere to their cottage code, you can you can double the density for any of the single-family lot zones that they allow them. And uh, but I realize we we run up against, I guess it's the the P G Sound Regional Council or Comp Plan, uh whatever environmental requirements. Um, so that that to me begs the larger question, like, what's it gonna take? Um, we're on, we're, you know, in a hair-on-fire moment here for our housing and we really need to 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 be bold and and move the needle. I heard that kind of thought from council last night, too. So if we're if we're gonna get the equivalent of just, you know, ten percent, twenty percent uh more housing, um, I don't know that that's gonna yield the results we're looking for. Um, so I I would start to wonder what what's it gonna take for us to be able to do a triplex or fourplex on every single one of those uh new lots? Instead of just one new home for every five, something like that. Um, that's that's where I immediately start thinking about um. Because with the with some thoughtful changes to the land use code about tree canopy and grading and stormwater and things like that. Yeah, maybe size limits to the to the dwellings if you decide to do four instead of uh one, things like that, that um, there seems like there'd be a way through for us to to get a lot more than and what twenty percent more dwellings per subdivision.
Thank you. Uh, Senior Planner Boyd, could you speak a little more to the environmental review? Is that the environmental review that the city did when establishing the zoning? Uh, or would that be additional review, which would need to be done by the developer?
It, well, for for the code amendments, we're gonna need to do some environmental review, looking at the impacts. Uh, and uh generally, for this kind of code amendment and and the clustering, uh that results in a in a determination of non-significance or perhaps a mitigated uh determination of non-significance. But if we if we can't um reach that threshold, then we're in a uh the point of doing a full environmental impact analysis. And and um, and that's something that we could, here's another thing to maybe to consider is is think of this as a as a first step and we will be doing more extensive environmental analysis with the the comp plan review. So we can, we can also put in the the parking lot and and make recommendations uh of of further steps that we might take uh with the the um uh comp plan update. I guess, and just kind of philosophically, one uh issue I have with I think some jurisdictions have justified um the uh allowing uh middle housing on on any single-family property and done some analysis that says that said that um, you know, not only a percentage of those will will actually take advantage of this, so and and base their uh impact analysis on that. If we allow in a new subdivision every lot to have a a triplex or a fourplex, then um that seems to be essentially a a an upzone uh to uh to a, you know, our twenty eight hundred at least, uh or four thousand at least, or our twenty eight hundred. Uh, and probably even beyond that. Uh, and um so that we would really then wind up with uh clusters of middle housing and then in the sea of of single-family uh 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 housing, which may not be a terrible thing, but um, but I think if we're gonna say that this is something that we're allowing in single-family zones, um uh, that's something we're gonna have to uh look at carefully is is uh, at what point does that just become an an upzone to a multifamily zone?
And so there will be an environmental review. You will make, well, the there will be a determination made as to whether there's probable significant adverse impact. And that determination could be challenged. So those who might oppose the action could challenge it and then throw you down a different path.
Right.
Okay. Um. Okay, Commissioner Robson.
Um, I was just, I had a question running is so we are investigating to expand um the regulations for fourplexes is for up to up to fourplexes, is that, am I understanding that correctly? Or can we, they be including things like cottage courts or um? We only talk, yeah.
We, yeah, we we will be uh looking at the other uh other options. Uh, cottage courts are essentially smaller, single-family uh homes on, but um uh in the in the legislation that was before the the legislature, before it it uh um uh went down or didn't advance, they were considering allowing up to six plexes for cottage, uh for courtyard housing. So that's that's something that uh could be on the table if there's interest in that. We started off the discussion of allowing up to fourplexes in single-family zones.
I mean, I'm I'm interested if, especially when we're talking about new subdivisions, you know, I think that it's worthwhile considering how um larger, especially if you consider um allowing them to implement it anywhere within a new subdivision, well, then I think that maybe limiting it to um fourplexes might be something we want to think about because uh then we could, you know, they might be able to build within a subdivision two cottage courts or something along that those lines. Um, but I understand that the current legislation that's up right now is just regarding fourplexes. Um, with regards to what Commissioner Westerbeck was saying, I think that um maybe um the middle housing anywhere within um half a mile of transit would be sort of a middle ground between um having um, you know, single families divisions and then just uh with one subdivision of multifamily homes. If we um allowed new subdivisions in the transition area or within half a mile of transit, um, it might lend itself to sort of a focused um corridor of um middle housing as opposed to sparsely populated throughout the city. Tossing it out there.
And any thoughts on the um the bonus yield that should be allowed for a new subdivision?
Is that directed at me?
So I think generally. Feel free.
My understanding is the bonus yield is how many um, how, um, what percentage is allowed um um multifamily housing or middle housing within new subdivisions? And I I would say new subdivisions within half a mile from public walkable print, public transit should just have as many as they want. No, no yield, unlimited, unlimited, and then twenty percent elsewhere in Bothell. Sounds like a good, bold movement approach.
Okay, other commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Gustafson.
Um, thank you, Chair and fellow commissioners. I did want to return to the possibility of perhaps pairing some strong tree canopy legislation with some really, really bold uh missing middle allowances. I mean, going back to what Commissioner Westerbeck said, fifty percent across the city, I think that should be on the table, if I heard that correctly. And um, first of all, I highly agree with the suggestion to modify the setback requirements to protect trees. And I'm wondering if we could also modify the setback requirements to protect other environmental features like stormwater retention or lots of other things that might be within a property as well. And part of the reason why I keep going back to the tree canopy is that the council, some council members and community members have expressed to me that they're very concerned that the missing middle legislation might decrease the overall trees in Bothell and really important concern. And I believe the best way to address this is not to reduce the missing middle legislation, but instead to just get your tree canopy um protected specifically. And I think um the key thing about a tree canopy legislation here is that it would apply to single-family homes as well as new missing middle construction, because I believe um that would discourage cutting down our green belt to build new homes, single-family homes, which is occurring in my neighborhood. And um, I think it would actually um improve the chances for infill development happening. So that's my plug and I'll stop now. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Now, Commissioner Robson, your hand is still up. Okay. Uh, other Commissioner comments, questions? I think one of the challenge, Commissioner Westerbeck.
Well, why don't you go ahead, Kevin, then uh I can go after you if there's more time.
Well, I was gonna, oh, there's there's time, but I was gonna say, I think one of the challenges we face is there are a lot of nuances to this. And, you know, what what we might, what might be easily achievable in new subdivisions might be more challenging elsewhere. And I I think it all gets thrown in the blender and sometimes we kind of wrap ourselves around the axle on it. So just an observation. My inclination is to go big on the new subdivisions, because one of the arguments is, you know, affecting existing neighborhoods. Well, a new neighborhood is what it's gonna be. So I think we should go as big as we can on that. Uh, on the other hand, I think given the current development um environment, I'm not sure it'll get much yield. There'll be the ability to do it, whether the developers will choose to exercise that ability, I'm not sure. Uh, so that's the concern I have there. So Commissioner Westerbeck and then Commissioner Dodd.
Sure, thanks, Chair Karen. Um, a couple of things like, so I always come back to um the fact that um we have a lot of people who have homes, they're probably already renting out a a floor and they're in their split level or something like, I know someone who does that. A lot of people do that. There are a lot of informal ADUs and D D D Us already within existing homes that we all know there used to be ones from detached and stuff. So I feel like um it's almost semantics, we start talking about whether we should allow people to take an existing house. That's sometimes big enough to be up to be a triplex or a fourplex. You know, we've seen this near universities like University of Washington and any university has done this. They've turned grand old houses into multiple units. Um, and it seems like we should be making a a way for people. Uh, like Dave said, this might effectively turn into an R twenty eight hundred zone or something, but make it make it uh easy for people to turn their uh convert their home into a duplex, triplex, fourplex to accommodate more people if they want to. And, uh, so I realize that may trigger all kinds of EIS stuff. So, but it's just so sensible. Takes existing buildings, doesn't even really change them that much. Maybe they'll, they'll, maybe they'll remodel or add on wherever. They're gonna have to probably do some interior remodeling or lease, but seem like that's low hanging fruit for, uh, the, and could happen more quickly. So I kind of wonder about that. That, of course, begs a question about, um, upzones and, um, you know, there's, there's research showing that strong towns, you wrote about this a week or two ago. Um, it's logical to, uh, when we spot zone, for example, it's not logical to spot zone. We, we drive all the, the development and gentrification and drive land values up tremendously when we say this area, this arterial, this neighborhood uh, should be upzoned, but nothing else. If you do a blanket upzone, one increment, whatever, um, then, uh, you spread it out across an entire city and no one neighborhood gets hit with, you know, everybody's property value goes up a little bit instead of one area going up dramatically. So I just really think that's the route forward in some of this is just broad low upstones. Um, so whether that's saying everything ninety six hundred goes to eighty four hundred and, and on down the line. Or, or it means that everything that's one, one unit gets to go to two units. Um, I think there could be a solution in there and it utilizes, um, a small incremental jump to hopefully get some, uh, quicker action to create housing. Um, so I'm just, this is some of the thoughts I have. And again, I don't know how that yet, how that affects our comp plan and our EIS, um, issues.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodd?
Thanks. I was just thinking about what, um, Commissioner, what other commissioners had said about, um, especially what you said, Chair, about will developers actually build these units? And I'm wondering if one of our goals is to really see some change with new developments. Um, and new subdivision is to, to put in sort of a floor within, um, boundaries of frequent transit. So maybe within a half mile of frequent transit, put a minimum density in there and say, okay, if you're gonna build a new development here, especially if single family homes, make it half duplexes or half missing middle or what, you know, obviously that's all up for debate, but maybe that's a, a strategy to actually get some of this density where it needs to be within new developments. Um, so uh, I, again, I will ask for a sanity check from staff, but I'm just wondering if that helps a little bit or if that is, um, possible.
All right, uh, others? Commissioner Kurd? And then Director Cotterman.
Okay, um, this is Karsten. Uh, we're still on the first question about yields in new subdivisions. Um, I still feel like 20% is a minimum. Uh, and one of the issues that I have with keeping it to new subdivisions is if now all of us were on the missing middle walk. So, uh, when we walked through, uh, Lower Maywood and we saw some of the new, uh, development, uh, that there were some new duplexes that were like currently being built. Um, those aren't necessarily affordable. And so basically the only benefit that's going in there is that, um, it's more um, more people, which is obviously a benefit for, um, you know, the city municipal tax, uh, burden as well as, um, you know, keeping, um, building places for people where there's services, um, that they can use. Um, it also supports local businesses by having a base of, um, people that can, you know, um, patronize those businesses. But it's not necessarily giving a whole lot of affordability requirements. And so, um, I, I think that on in new subdivisions, there would definitely need to be some affordable housing, um, component if we start ratcheting up the limit on yield uh, um, substantially. Um, because we're trying to also, we're trying to solve a lot of problems with, uh, one solution and the solution that we're using with missing middle. It's really flexible, but we need to make sure that, um, we're not, um, just, uh, using half, uh, or solving things halfway, but leaving, uh, really large loopholes for not achieving, um, you know, a, a variety of different benefits from, um, from these tools. So that's my input on new subdivisions.
Thank you. Director Cotterman?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Dodd so she wasn't questioning her sanity the rest of the evening. I didn't want to leave her hanging out there. Uh, minimum densities are used in other places, uh, and that is one way that you can ensure that you're actually encouraging more of that type of development. So I think that is definitely a tool that, uh, that we need to explore as part of this process.
Thank you.
And I'd like to respond, uh, to Commissioner Kurd's comment that yes, uh, we, this is just one tool in our toolbox. Uh, council also initiated some uh, uh, more significant rezones in, in particular areas where, where we'll uh, have, where we have the opportunity of getting, uh, a, a bigger bang for our buck in, in terms of affordable housing requirements. So um, the, this, this will, uh, address certain um, uh, situations, uh, but, uh, we're, we're gonna need to use a, a wide variety of tools to, to, uh, really I make a, uh, significant effort towards addressing the affordable housing needs, uh, the, the entirety of the affordable housing needs. So it's, we're not trying to solve everything with middle housing. So.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? I guess I'd echo the, uh, uh, concern Commissioner Kurd's raised about the fact that all of this just because there's more density does not mean there's more affordability. And you don't have to look too far for townhouses in Bothell that are quite expensive. So, uh, yeah, that's just an observation.
I think this discussion has, uh, addressed the, the second bullet here. Uh, I think, I think I, I've heard a, a consensus for, uh, not just limiting uh, this approach to, um, a half mile from transit. Uh, so I think we could skip that unless anyone wants to challenge that, uh, assumption.
I, I would agree with that. And I'd also say, I think I've heard the, uh, consensus, consensus on going big on new subdivisions. Yeah, pushing the yield, uh, as far as you think you can within the existing environmental review. And then I'd suggest your idea of uh, really going big in the comp plan is something that I think the entire commission will be behind. My, I'm always concerned about waiting to get everything done before getting anything done. And, uh, you know, that's, that's perspective I bring to it. So, uh, is, is there a consensus on going big in new subdivisions? So I, I saw, yeah, I think we, we've got all in on that.
And, and we'll, we'll have to do some analysis, uh, on how, how big we can go without, um, you know, uh, really doing some significant environmental analysis. Um, so with that, just to move things along, um.
Well, we've got Commissioner Robson with her hand up. I wanna not go too far. No, okay. Good. So you'll find code language that says go big.
Um, so on, on the question, and I don't think this is a, a, a big item, but, uh, uh, the notion of limiting size to single family dimensions, that, that's one of the tenets of middle housing is that, that it is, uh, single family scale development. So uh, what I've heard is that there would be support for, um, uh, provisions that would allow some, some deviation from existing uh, setbacks, et cetera, to preserve trees or to preserve existing structures. But generally to stick with the, the notion of, of, uh, uh, at least closely approximating, uh, single family dimen- dimensions for middle housing is. Have I got, captured that?
Commissioner Kurd?
Thanks. Um, that's generally what I, uh, hold to be true as well. One element that might diverge a little bit is, um, in, um, trying to create walkable communities using missing middle housing, um, the difference between maximum depth, depth requirements or shifting the burden of setbacks from um, expansive front yard setbacks and, um, moving those to the backyard instead. Um, has been seen with some, um, success in other jurisdictions that have done comprehensive missing middle, um, reform. And so I don't necessarily want to conflate those two things, but they could possibly be used to um, the benefit of, uh, tree canopy as well as, um, creating walkable community by connecting these missing middle, um, structures to the street, uh, and frontage. So, um, I I, I think that flexibility is always a, a good thing with, uh, code language, um, but maybe, um, specifically flexibility on transferring, um, setbacks uh, from front yard to backyard might be warranted here as well. Thanks.
Hey, Commissioner Kurd, Commissioner Westerbeck?
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to add on to Commissioner Kurd there. Um, Commissioner Westerbeck, um, I, you know, lay out buildings for a living and, um, I just have seen through the years, front setbacks, especially in residential land use codes, uh, are probably the most problematic. And, um, yeah, except for maybe when you want to put in a driveway, which you should have the option to do if, if that's, you know, if you're required to put a parking spot and everything there. Even that, even that is usually better if it's out back. But, um, I really think that we should reexamine front setbacks intensely and, uh, like Commissioner Kurd said, either allow that, that to be put on the back or just, uh, allow them to be, uh, reduced. Um, a lot of the places we all love the most when we go on vacation and stuff, there is, there are no setbacks or they're very small setbacks. Um, there's almost no reason for us to have large, um, front setbacks, like in most cases. Um, that doesn't mean someone couldn't do that. Just like if we allow fourplexes, someone could still build a single family home and, of course, unless we have minimum densities, but allowing, uh, say as, as little as a, a five foot front setback, where we usually have 20, for example, can make a huge difference in what's buildable. And I will also bring up to the point that, um, Minneapolis was two, three, four years ago, was the first city in America to, um, allow for up to triplexes to, to do away with single family only zoning. And they saw very few proposals. Um, it was probably, probably because of the pandemic. They did, I think, a year, two years before the pandemic in 2018. Um, but, uh, that's been attributed now to the fact that they didn't change any of their setbacks, height limits, density, pervious surface, so forth. So they see, they saw very few proposals, even though they allowed triplexes. And so that, a lot of people who are, um, studied that have found that that was a major impediment. So they're now looking at that again, um, to see what they can do about that. So, yeah, uh, setbacks could be a real challenge. Um, and, uh, I, on setbacks, uh, again, as an architect, um, the building codes already dictate, um, you know, where you have, when you have to have a firewall, fire rated wall assembly next to another building and things like that. So we could probably rely on, on the building code a bit more than land use code. Um, so it's just some thoughts there, but for sure, front setbacks should be reconsidered. Um, so that you, you can even build from a bigger backyard. And, uh, one last thing, um, it'd be interesting. I would love to see us return to encouraging alleys. Um, because they create a lot more flexibility in, uh, how we can lay out our buildings and put the parking behind and and if, if we do reduce those front setbacks, we get a friendlier, friendlier face to the building. It's one of the reasons I think that a lot of us consider lower, lower Maywood such a nice neighborhood too, because it's the, the one you ever heard the song written in Bothell with alleys in some, some cases. So I wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Yeah, as this bullet is worded with an, and I'm focusing on preserving existing structures, I'd be inclined to allow to be, to be very favorable to increases, preserving existing structures. You know, what a concern is raised about maintaining neighborhood integrity, part of that is the structures. And if you gotta encroach on, you know, the dimensions to put another entrance in or to make minor modifications overall, preserving the structure, I would think that's a really good thing. So I'm, uh, very much in favor of that. Commissioner Dodd?
I just wanted to say I agree with you, Chair. I think that that makes sense, especially in, in an effort to preserve existing structure.
Okay, other commissioners or shall we move down to, uh, a group favorite about parking regulations?
Before we dive into that morass, um, I've, I've heard from two commissioners that, uh, seem to, uh, wanna be fairly, um, aggressive in, uh, modifying, uh, setbacks, particularly front, front setbacks. Uh, and a couple of others that seem to be more inclined to, uh, to make more modest, uh, changes, uh, primarily to preserve existing structures. Uh, and we, we can examine both and bring them back to you, but, but if trying to get some degree of consensus, uh, to focus our efforts.
Commissioner Kurd?
Thank you. Um, I will clarify that I, I guess, I guess got really excited for the last bullet point, but, um, when I said I want to see changes to setbacks, um, that's also with the intent for preserving existing structures as much as possible, but with the understanding that additions maybe for accessible entry or for, um, you know, uh, changes that would allow a duplex to take the spot of a current, uh, large, single family, uh, structure um, may require setback changes as well. And so it's not necessarily just the dimensions of the homes that are, um, going to need to have some modest increases, but also that of the setbacks. So that was, yes, I concur with the other commissioners. And I would, uh, say to go farther and um, even preservation of existing structures by allowing some flexibility with those um, envelopes that are allowed based on the setbacks. Hopefully that clarifies. Sorry for not being clear before.
Okay, that helps. Any other commissioners I can only see?
I believe Commissioner Gustafson has her hand up.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Gustafson.
Oh, sorry. Sarah Gustafson here. Um, I'd like to, uh, express my support for aggressively reducing those setbacks for all the reasons that Commissioner Westerback said, as long as we pair it with preserving. Now, I'm not going to talk about the trees this time, but the per, in the pervious surfaces. If we can guarantee that maybe perhaps through some kind of point system that the existing environmental features could be or performance could be kept, then yeah. Take away that setback if that's what's needed.
Well, I'm, I'm fairly certain that, well, I'll correct it. I'm certain the existing stormwater regulations would still apply as far as pervious surfaces and requirements to manage stormwater. Now, there are ways to do that by reducing pervious surfaces. But, uh, stormwater would certainly still need to be managed appropriately, in my opinion. So, Dave, you good on that one?
Sure. Um, so going into, without getting too deep into parking, um, are commissioners comfortable with the approach that we took with, um, corner lot duplexes, um, allowing, um, uh, reductions, uh, based on proximity to transit and trails, uh, or uh, at, at least as a starting point? Or are there other other, um, approaches that you'd like to see us look at, uh, including some codes to have, uh, in, uh, for uh, middle housing have allowed counting street parking towards the, uh, the parking requirement?
Commissioners? Commissioner Westerback?
Thank you, Chair Kieran. You know, I've got to chime in, but, um, I know that in our downtown subarea code, maybe Canyon Park is this way as well. We allow, um, street parking that's built as part of the project, uh, to be counted towards those commercial uses. And, um, I've often been confounded And I've often been confounded that we don't allow it to be used for residential too, because we know that people living in apartments or parking in the streets are probably the majority of people parking on the streets. So I'd really like to see that. That's how, you know, most of the cities of the world work. Seattle's that way. Most, any mature city, majority of people, especially older housing stock, they don't have garages. Don't even have driveways. Down Ballard where Mr. Boyd lives. A lot of people don't have, don't have places to park cars on their, on their property. And yet there's almost always street parking when you need it, when I'm visiting those places. So anyway, street parking and it should be considered as a viable option. And I have a note here, and we talked about this before. That means people would like to see a permit system. So that, again, much like in Seattle, you have to be a resident, have a sticker to park on the street overnight so that it's not students or whoever people are concerned about. Well, you know, maybe we should look at that. We've already got a program over by U. D. Bothwell, I understand. So anyway, that's something to think about. And then again, I would also say, keep in mind, a lot of people are upset about traffic coming to the neighborhood when there's additional units. And this is sort of flipping, flipping the usual argument on its head, but if we say let people decide how much parking and they don't put it in, they're attracting fewer cars to the neighborhood and less traffic. So in some ways, it can be really advantageous for people in neighborhoods where they don't want as much car, as many cars and traffic to not have a lot of extra parking, because you build parking and you bring cars. That's well known now. Just a few notes. Thanks.
Commissioner Dodd.
Thanks. Just real quick, so you guys know kind of where we're at. I would say duplicating what we did for corner lot duplexes would be the the minimum parking reduction I'd like to see for missing middle. I think that's the bare minimum starting point. If we can get more reductions, I think that's great. I do agree. As anyone who's watched me in previous meetings knows, I do agree with Commissioner Westerback that if you build less parking, hopefully you attract less cars and there's a lot of studies to back that up. I also think it's important to count street parking because that is public space that we all pay for. And it doesn't make sense or it's benefit just a few people when it should benefit all. So thank you.
Other commissioners? Oops, I jumped off. Commissioner Kurt.
Thanks. To answer briefly, yes, yes, and yes, I think for the last yes on based on proximity to transit and trails, we utilized a half mile as the crow flies in our previous discussions and perhaps if we're allowing this possibly or investigating this possibility citywide, it may be a better approach to move to a walk shed approach. And so I'd like to throw that out there. I know that I will still maintain that Bottle has the highest parking ratios in Washington State. I've looked through every jurisdiction now. For single family, we require three spaces for a single family residence, which is a phenomenal amount of asphalt and parking. So want to reduce that wherever possible. And if this means allowing citywide missing middle, then walk shed approach to transit and trails would be warranted. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurt. Others? Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. I believe I'm probably the biggest parking minimum reduction skeptic on this board, but I'm still for it. I would recommend that parking minimums citywide, the reduction by right happen in the residential areas only. I'm definitely concerned about conflicts that arise in the commercial mixed residential areas or the residential areas that are close to commercial. Because I'm concerned with people who live there, parking their cars there and then folks trying to access the commercial establishment or the churches not being able to get there. So, but I think if I would support the parking reductions if they came with the parking management in those kind of mixed residential commercial zones.
Thank you, Commissioner Gustafson. And you said the magic words I like as well, parking management. I think we need to think about the effects of some of these changes. And even something as simple as street cleaning. In many cities where there are, there is parking on streets allowed, you got to clear it when they sweep the streets. So we do need to look at, or we, meaning the council, needs to look at parking management as well. It's a very difficult subject. There's a whole lot that's not popular about it, but I think it's really a necessity as it moves forward. Anything else on this one? Or Dave, you think you got some clarity?
Yes, thank you. And on the last bullet, I think we really covered a lot of that in the dimensional discussion and previous discussions. I didn't hear any support for design requirements. The ones that have come up in some missing middle housing presentations I've seen are requirements for the street presence and the maximum depth came out of that. So to avoid a fourplex that has all the units facing the side and rather than the front. So is there support for us looking into some modest design requirements to encourage that sort of street facing units and avoiding sort of units that face to the side?
So Commissioner Dodd.
In short, yes.
Okay, there's a yes. I saw a thumbs up from Commissioner Kurt. Commissioner Westerback.
I'm going to be the outlier and say, I don't believe in those design requirements. I have someone who's had to design on all kinds of crazy sites, steep slopes, narrow triangular shaped lots, all kinds of things. And sometimes there's only one or two solutions that will work for where to put a front door or how to design a property. We're not always going to get these nice perfect 50 by 100 lots or whatever. And designers need flexibility. You know, we always hope we're going to get people who are skilled at what they do. We're going to get some who aren't. That's the way it goes. That's kind of what makes a city interesting too. We're already, you know, I don't think we always have the most beautiful housing going up already. So that ship has sailed. So I think let people figure it out. I wouldn't object if we could think of some design requirements that were not too restrictive. But a lot of ADU codes say you have to have the door, for example, on a different face, the side away, a different side of the building than a, than the primary door on a home that has attached dwelling unit. And that's fine. We can always usually work that in, but sometimes it's really hard to do. Sometimes it really would work better to have it on the front of a house. So I just want to be cautious about that. That can, that can cause real challenges for when you're trying to design for a unique site.
Thank you. Commissioner Kurt.
Thanks. I want to qualify my thumbs up. Yes, okay, so design requirements may be more as encouragement to refrain from having Bottle has a lot of like long lots that are perpendicular to the street frontage. And so on a lot that's near my residence, there is a, there is new development that has a long extension or it's like a shared access road perpendicular to the street that all the cars use. And then they go into each one of these like townhomes, basically. And that's something that really ruins the cohesion and like the fabric of that, the community kind of, because now you have people on kind of a separate separate road. And that's, that's one way to make missing middle housing not very attractive for people to live in. And so while I agree with Commissioner Westerback that design requirements do disincentivize new, new buildings because they they inhibit flexibility, I would say that if we, if there's any way to encourage good behavior for designers and best practices on creating community through missing middle, that would be something I would love to see. I don't know how you do it, but I'm not an expert.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurt. Other commissioner comments?
Okay, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I definitely see the dilemma here. Clearly, the more requirements you put on a developer, the less flexibility they have, the more difficult it is and probably the more expensive it is. On the other hand, when we think about things like street presence, I think there's a value to that for the community. So I'm a bit torn there. Dave, you had a comment?
Oh, no, I just, it sounded like we had gotten everybody's feedback on that one. I was gonna move to the next set of questions, which I think we probably have have to some degree addressed. So the first bullet is kind of the most incremental approach. And so I've heard that that we, the commission is in favor of going beyond that and allowing middle housing everywhere and maximizing the yields in new subdivisions and near transit, but not, not restricting them beyond that. Or, I mean, restricting just to those areas. We haven't really had any discussion yet on whether, and we're going to have to take a look at, at our overall scope and our budget and we might be, not be able to tackle all of these things. But I did want to get a sense for whether there's interest in addressing impediments to middle housing in multifamily zones as well as single family zones. And in addressing some infill restrictions in single family zones as part of this effort. We can lump those two together.
I'm guessing the answer is going to be yes on that, looking across commissioners.
Okay. And then
Notting. I think, Dave, you can gather this general consensus on encouraging middle housing and to the extent we can. And where there are impediments and restrictions, looking at how we can remove those to encourage that end result.
And as far as ADUs go, I think we will kind of wait to see what the legislation is that comes out of council and also assess, you know, how much we can include an ADU amendments in these, but and come back to you with that. So.
Commissioner comments or questions? Seeing none, if you feel you've gotten the input you need from us, Dave, thank you. Interesting discussion as always. We appreciate the information you bring to us. So thank you.
Thank you. And you've given us a lot to chew on. And so we, we'll, we'll get back to you with regard to whether we're going to be ready to bring this back on, on March 16th. But for now, I think that's, that's still going to be our target, I think. I think now we've got some clear direction and we'll be able to dive into this and bring back to you some, some, at least preliminary approaches to consider on March 16th. That some of the other questions about looking into how far we can go in terms of the capacity we have to do environmental review for this may require some additional work. So thank you very much and we'll carry on.
All right. Thank you. We'll quote your hearing for me. Our next item is discussion on transfer development rights in Canyon Park. I'm going to look across and see if there's an interest in a 10 minute break before we launch into the next, I see. I see a strong consensus. So I've got 7:46 here. Let's reconvene in 10 minutes and take up that item. All right. Thank you all. We'll see you soon. Uh, reconvene the February 16th meeting of the Planning Commission. Balfour Planning Commission, welcome back, everyone. We will continue with our study session tonight, moving on to transfer development rights in Canyon Park. And I believe for this item, Senior Planner Lamb will lead us.
Hey, good evening, commissioners. Nice to see y'all again, and I have a presentation to share that hopefully, uh, won't take too long, uh, and we'll reserve, if you kindly reserve questions until the end. Go ahead and share my screen. Yeah, that's a lot smoother than the last time I tried it, so we, we should be in good shape, right? All right, so, um, this is an update of the TDR program we've been working on in, in Canyon Park. Last time we came to you was in, uh, September of last year, so, uh, it's been a while. Um, this is, uh, we're, we're through phase one now and have moved on to phase two. And we're gonna talk about some of the findings of, um, the phase one report that the consultant that we've been working with has provided for us. Uh, I'm gonna go through a little review, um, just 'cause it's been a while, um, and also for anyone who's watching. Uh, so this is, um, a directive, uh, from the Canyon Park SubArea Plan, uh, that, uh, tells us if there's land uses that aren't capable of meeting the minimum density and intensity levels that were established, uh, or that would later be established, um, that, uh, we should, we should, uh, build a, or start a TDR Activity Unit, uh, program essentially allowing us to, uh, protect the capacity, the potential capacity for activity units in the Regional Growth Center of Canyon Park, which allows us to remain competitive for, um, regional funding from PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council. And so that's what we're doing. Uh, we also talked about where, uh, this is a strategic partnership with, uh, Burke, who's our consultant, and Sound Transit, who, uh, has funded the study and is using their bus-based north, uh, bus barn maintenance facility as a case study for the program. Uh, it is an essential public facility. We talked about, uh, what that was last time, and it, and this is gonna be an integral part of their system expansion for their bus, BRT, um, that's coming up 405 and 522 in the, in the coming years. And so, uh, that is a strategic location, uh, for them to, uh, be, be citing that facility at. Uh, but they weren't meeting the minimum density required, and so we have a perfect case study for, uh, what our plan directed us to do. And we talked about what, how TDR is traditionally used and how we would use it in Canyon Park. So for instance, you would have, uh, the bus base site, uh, we'll call it Site A. They have some unused capacity, uh, and they would transfer it to Site B in a predetermined receiving area in the Regional Growth Center, who has built to their maximum base FAR, but they're, they're looking for, um, a, a little bit more flexibility, and, and they're essentially getting bonus floor area ratio that we're transferring over from a, from another site. And we talked about that. The purpose would be to, uh, basically, uh, add another tool in our toolbox for, uh, getting some affordable, uh, housing in Canyon Park, and that it would need to be transportation-oriented development, so within a, a half mile of, uh, a transit station, and the TOD state statute actually requires that for surplus property for regional, uh, transit, um, uh, facilities like, um, the bus barn and that, uh, Sound Transit is proposing. And so that's sort of the background context. So, uh, like I said last time, we talked about this, it was September. We, uh, carried our phase one work through, uh, the end of, uh, last year. It, we received an assessment and recommendations report, and we're now carrying those recommendations forward into phase two, which is gonna be ultimately to develop some, um, draft code language for your consideration, uh, that, uh, you know, you can do with it what you please. I think the way things are shaping up, there's gonna be some alternatives, uh, an alternative language to, to choose from, but we still have a lot of work to do, uh, to put that together. Uh, and so phase two's in progress, and, um, you know, later, later on, uh, after you all make a recommendation that would go to city council to, um, go into the placeholder that we have in the Canyon Park SubArea Regulations for, for TDR. Okay, so I'm gonna talk about the findings now, so, um, so it was important for us to be able to, uh, establish a framework with the, uh, all of the regulatory parameters. Uh, so I mentioned the TOD statute, uh, which is the, uh, 80-80-80 rule, which requires, uh, surplus property like this to be, uh, offered to, uh, qualified entities, um, that would, that would agree to build affordable housing in the Regional Growth Center, or the, the proceeds that are sold from that surplus property would have to be dedicated to build affordable housing in the Regional Growth Center. And so, um, we've, we've got some, but I, I think you had a little bit of that in your report. We, uh, enumerated the, um, local jurisdictions, uh, or, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. That's the, that was the next step, is administration, so. Uh, we, once we had the regulatory framework, we had to think about how, uh, the, the program would be administered, and the consultant went and did case studies, uh, at Redmond and King County and Snohomish County, and then enumerated those, uh, local jurisdictions and how they apply their TDR programs, so we could get, uh, you know, a taste of those flavors that, of their programs and how they implement their program. And so we got some insight from that, and we're carrying that information uh, over into phase two, and we'll talk a little bit about those recommendations in a couple slides. Uh, we had a really informative, uh, pro forma analysis, uh, which was the approach to the overall feasibility. We wanted to know, okay, is it even realistic to, uh, it, within this, uh, under the circumstances in, uh, in Canyon Park to use TDR credits? Do they have value? And fortunately, we found out it is feasible, and it, they do have value. And then we got some numbers for ranges for establishing, okay, what is, what's the cost versus the value? What does the value of the TDR credits need to be established at so that there's uptake in that? It's not a disincentive, uh, for developers in the future to use them. And then finally, we got some recommendations for receiving areas. So you see a heat map on here. I believe that was in your staff report as well. Uh, and we'll talk about how, uh, we came to, um, uh, that heat map with those, with those recommended areas and the, the traffic impacts that might be associated uh, with transferring capacity from a, one area to another area, one super block to another super block. Uh, so, just pivoting back to administration, the recommendation from the consultant, uh, after looking at, uh, other programs in the area was that the limited scope of what we're doing really doesn't lend itself to anything beyond uh, the simplest form of it was, which is essentially that. And Ben, we'll, I'll get into this recommendation later. Actually, I'm, I'm kinda getting ahead of myself again, but, um, it's, it, it's, the recommendation is for Sound Transit to own, uh, the, the credits while the city acts as a bank, and that's just gonna be the simplest way to do it. King County has full-time staff, several staff members, uh, that are assigned to just their TDR program, and so that works well for them because they have a lot more area that they're covering. Uh, the, there's private market with public support, um, uh, models, and, uh, Kit, Kit, I can, I always get tripped on, up on this word. Kititas County offers, uh, information and details on its TDR program, but transactions are conducted in the, uh, private market, and so that's kinda uh, how that model works. And then the public-private partnerships is when the city would maintain the credits and act as the bank, but then we would contract out for help from a, a third or private party. And so again, the, the small scope of this program doesn't really lend itself to, to, uh, those models. Okay, so, uh, talking about traffic impacts and receiving areas, uh, some of the findings from Favis One was that the effects of shifting development capacity are minor, uh, which is good news, 'cause last year there was a lot of, um, discussion about traffic and, and internal roads, and we found that patterns of development resulting from shifts in capacity will result in minimal impacts to internal roads, so that's, again, good. And then, of course, um, as you could guess, the recommendation was receiving site, receiving sites should, uh, be allowed, and all medium and high-density areas not impacted by transportation concerns. And so, if you look on the heat map, you'll see that, um, everything east of the highway is, uh, is, has minimal transportation impacts, and then, um, everything on the other side indicated by the underco, the other color has uh, reduction in performance. Uh, there's some potentially impacted intersections, uh, and I believe the recommendation from the report was that the, uh, Thrasher's Corner would be super blocks one through four, uh, and part of five would be the best locations, uh, currently. We're still talking to our Public Works Department, uh, and getting their insight and take on, um, the findings of the, uh, subconsultant, uh, from Farron Pierce that did some traffic impact modeling. And so we're still sort of working and refining these receiving areas, uh, but I think this is gonna be pretty close to what it looks like. The Public Works, um, is on board with. So, so in the broader context of the Bus Rapid Transit coming to this area later, um, we're gonna see that, uh, feasibility is impacted by other incentives such as parking reductions, which is al- already on the table. We've already been talking about that, uh, but at the last couple meetings you've had, and some other incentives, and so now we're kind of, Pu- Public Works and our consultant are kind of waiting to see how things shape out or shake out and, uh, and use, use insight from those discussions. Uh, the pro forma analysis, uh, this, um, was in your report as well, so uh, the analysis focused on the expected increase from profits that could result from increased density provided through TDR credits, and so what a pro formas analysis, uh, entails is, uh, it estimates construction costs, net operating income, and a sale price to determine the rate of return essentially on, uh, investments. And so what you have here is, uh, we got a whole series of, uh, very thorough, um, through a very thorough analysis of, um, different models that the consultant run, basically looking at, okay, what's the impact of TDR credits beyond the maximum, uh, FAR that we have established, and, uh, trying to get a sense of where that credit value is. So on the, on the X-axis, if you will, you have, um, lower density development, uh, on, uh, on the left side, and higher density development, obviously, on the, uh, other end of the, uh, FAR uh, maximum floor area ratio. Uh maximum floor area ratio, which is the vertical line you see in the middle, and on the Y axis, it's either. Less profitable or more profitable. And the um sweet spot we're sort of looking for is between eight and twelve percent in returns, and so. You you get to see that. In a cup in another slide here. Uh and I just want it before we look at uh some of those exhibits uh that were in your report, I just want to go over what the. Overall recommendations were through feasibility, which was that. Uh that overall the results indicate um that their the credits do have value, I mentioned that earlier. Additional incentives would be needed to be put in place to promote their use. And long term use of the credits is more likely than immediate application, so this is a this is a long term play. That is sort of contingent on uh a lot of market conditions. Uh including increased rents and land values. Um and that's gonna be impacted by that future uh B R T. And so. So now we'll look at a couple of those exhibits, and so. Uh these two are just a juxtaposition, so you can see the effect of. What T D R brings with no incentives, just all by its own, I believe this was the um office residential zone. Just base conditions uh using uh T D R. And you see that returns are highest on on the underside of the maximum. F A R, okay, so when when you start to build over for these different um construction types. Uh that were, I think I've um. Mentioned that in your report, the the difference between the different construction types. You see a decline in uh uh returns on investment, it's essentially, and so that makes the project. Less feasible, it kills it, and it's really tied to parking. Uh is what the consultant found. And so uh we're gonna talk about the some of the recommend some of the um. Incentives that the consultant recommended that would have a a good impact on uh returns or uh. Favorable impact, and and that's what you see on the right side here, so with all of the incentives. Maybe that's not the way it happens in the future, but it's just to show that with the incentives. Uh feasibility is greatly increased uh to get those higher densities. Uh that we wanted to see in Canyon Park. Okay, and uh commercial development, we're not gonna really talk about, I don't want to uh. Uh dive too deep into this one, but generally, commercial development was. Uh less feasible than residential development, and it is because it's tied to higher parking ratios and. Uh the the nature of the construction of. Office uh versus wood frame, you know, purely residential developments or five over one. And then um. The also the uh. The demand for office that would come further. Down the road with uh with uh B R T servicing the area. And so uh what this what this exhibit is showing is that even with. Uh some incentives, um you you have your, I don't know if you can, hopefully you can see my cursor, but. Uh the base, the base uh conditions are shown in the um. In that faint blue line, hopefully you can see that, but above it, uh you see the the plots. And uh it's. It it increases feasibility, but not enough to where um we thought there would be uptake, so we have a little bit more work to do. Uh for uh looking at commercial development and and how we could get some better uptake on that and make it more feasible. Overall recommendations, um pivoting kind of abruptly here, but overall recommendations was that. You know, Sound Transit should retain uh ownership of the credits while both are both will administers them as a T D R bank, I alluded to that earlier. The proceeds of the sale of credits should be earmarked specifically for affordable housing. Uh essentially to subsidize affordable housing in in Canyon Park. And an interlocal agreement should be put into place to define the expectations and conditions of the program. Um obviously, Sound Transit has a bottom line. And the city has its policy and objectives for the Canyon Park sub area. And so we just want to be really careful about how we. Craft the language in that interlocal agreement, building flexibility in there so that. We have a mutual understanding that the that the overall goal is uh affordable T O D. Uh in uh in Canyon Park. And so uh our next steps are almost to the end here, so we uh I I think. Director Cotterman or Senior Planner Dave Boyd mentioned uh the D S A G group earlier. Uh we're actually going to be visiting D S A G as well with uh our consultant. To sort of pitch the program to the development community and garner their feedback. And uh we we hope to use use uh any feedback that we get from them. And then uh we've been talking a lot about our our public uh engagement lately, about how we'll close the loop. With folks that we go ask, you know, for feedback. We'll follow up with them and show them exactly how and where we use their feedback, and so. Um we've got some in more internal meetings, some things to work out, uh but that would be our public engagement. And last slide here, uh yeah, we we were very excited to get the green light and find out that uh. That the project was feasible, and so we are. Uh looking forward to bringing you some alternatives for code language uh in a couple of months. Now, we have a end date estimation of in in June sometime, so early summer. Uh I did want to, there were some policy consideration questions in your packets. Uh but I think what the better um. Path would be is to hold off on those and just consider it food for thought for right now. Um we still have some analysis to do, that's gonna inform the potential code language. And so I think it's gonna work better if we um the next time we come to you, we just present you with that. Uh language and we can, we can go from there. So. Uh with that, I will take any questions and I'll let. Director Cotterman fill in any gaps I might have skipped over.
All right, Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Kurd.
Hey, thanks, uh and thanks for the presentation, Senior Planner Lamb, that was really great, and um I feel like. When I started on the commission, people were saying T D R all the time and no one really explained it, so this is actually the first time where. It's been laid out in a packet for me, and it's just so helpful, I appreciate. Your slides and everything, um so uh my kind of question is a little philosophical, but um. The city is. Yeah, a work in progress, and just like tonight, how we're talking about possibly changing. Um lots of things and in the later discussion tonight about docket items. Um I'm wondering how some of the um parameters and variables that are used in the pro forma. Might be um uh changed substantially by the time we get uh. Code language in in place, so is the pro forma pretty flexible and can you return to it? Or is it something that um would take a lot of additional effort um to update it?
That is a good question, uh I think that it's. It's flexible and and just the amount of um exhibits that we received the from the consultant, it seems like it's. Uh more or less, uh I don't want to say easy, because I didn't do the analysis, but it seems like we could uh request. That some of the variables be changed and get some get some new outputs, especially since, like you mentioned, a lot of things are in flux right now. And actually, um I think we're probably gonna have to do that at some point. Uh especially if we're gonna be um bringing you alternative uh you know, alternatives for code language. Um I think at some point, we're gonna have to think of think these scenarios out. And um that's where that's gonna come in handy for that pro forma analysis, so yeah, yeah, we'll we'll make sure that um. Uh our our consultant has been uh just great to work with uh um so far, and so I I don't see that being an issue for phase two, so. Yep.
Great, thank you.
Other Commissioners? So two um. Items that I may look to Commissioner Kurd on one of these. Uh I was a little surprised that underground parking was shown to be a benefit, it seems to me groundwater is probably pretty high there. Is that a fair assumption?
Good question, I might have to follow up uh with the consultant, I there was one point when we did that that was. A discussion, uh but I don't remember us circling back around to that, and so I would have to get some more intel. Uh for you. Um because I I can't answer that question whether it was uh. Uh I think for simplicity um of just running the models and the the typologies of buildings that. We wanted to see in Canyon Park, I think that's why we chose to do it that way, but um. Yeah, maybe we should think about the uh the impacts on especially the receiving areas. Uh if there's anywhere where um there's more impact, then yeah, that's that's gonna be a factor, so I'll make a note of that and. And uh maybe follow up with you.
Yeah, I suspect that's a standard approach, that underground parking can serve space, and then therefore there's a benefit. But I think in this specific area, think about groundwater, if you can get into dewatering pretty quickly. And quite likely on an ongoing basis, bumping up costs, so be careful with that one. And the other clarification is, so we're we're transferring these development rights from here to there. Will we then grant additional height uh to the in the receiving area? How will they, how will they use those development rights?
Yeah, so we're we're still working that out right now, we're we're really in the midst of um how that how that pans out, but. I I believe the um height maximums in the regulations would allow. Uh for um going over the maximum F A R uh. If if I'm I'm shooting from the hip here, I don't have the regulations in front of me, but. I don't remember that being a concern uh since we started uh, you know, doing the feasibility report for the program, so. I I think we're okay there. As far as heights are concerned, but we'll we can, we can follow up about that too, to make sure we're not overlooking or missing something. It's a good point.
Good, yeah, I'd like to be sure that if we are transferring them to somewhere, the receiving area would be able to use them. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Gustafson.
Um Sarah Gustafson here, and um Senior Planner Lamb. Again, thank you for putting out the charts and the ways to explain this on multiple levels. My question is, how much proceeds would the city expect, both? Total best case scenario and also likely scenario?
I might have to lean on Director Cotterman for this one, but I think that's that that's some of the work that remains to be done, we we need to think through. The scenarios because Sound Transit could either transfer the credits to us. Uh at no cost, and we could sell those credit, or excuse me, um we could transfer those at no cost to developers. Uh there's a, there's a couple of different scenarios that could um shake out, I think they can um. They could sell their, they could sell the the credits. And the proceeds would have to be used for affordable housing in some way, uh but the the. The um uh what's the word I'm looking for? The the fact of the matter is, is that at some point um affordable housing would be built because the in the. T O D statute, uh eighty percent of the the surplus property uh that would be transferred has to be. Uh uh built as affordable housing, and so I think that's one of the questions we're wrestling with is. Um you know, do you? And that was actually one of the, it has to do with one of the policy considerations that we should be thinking about is. Um you know, when when when. There's different implications when a developer gets the credits uh at a cost or at no cost. And so that's a very long winded way of saying, I don't know, but um. There's there's different scenarios that we have to run through to 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 determine. Okay, what's the what's the biggest net benefit, do we want to sell the, you know, do we want to have a program that uh markets the pros? Markets the credits such that we get the greatest return so that we can subsidize affordable housing. Uh or not. Uh and when, yeah, we still have some analysis to do to to look at the the implications of those scenarios, so.
Just to add, excuse me, to add on to that, um. Nathan's correct, we don't know, and I'm not sure that we could really. Come up with an estimate, uh because we don't know if we'll be selling any of the credits. So the value would still need to be determined, we don't know how many of those would be sold. For a dollar amount and how many would be, just as he said, transferred at no cost because of the eligibility of the project. Uh plus, we're not talking about a lot of credits here, so it it wouldn't necessarily generate a lot of dollar amount. The key part of it, though, for for us and for Sound Transit is, any funds that are generated as a result of the sale of those credits. Would have to go to affordable housing.
And we would also need to define what we're looking for in affordable housing.
Yeah.
You know, rental, eighty percent A M I, sixty percent A M I, and those are.
Yeah, that's part of the eighty 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 rule, so that it has to be at eighty percent of A M I or less.
Yeah, so the question is or less.
Right, so in some cases, it may, it may deepen the affordability, they may, you know, buy some credits to deepen the affordability. Um as long as it's adding the capacity, I mean. It it's important to keep in mind here, the 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 main reason we're doing this. Is to make sure that we retain the overall development capacity of the regional growth center. To meet the requirements of the Beute Sound Regional Council. So as long as we're doing that. Because maybe what we've even talked about with with a consultant and with Sound Transit is. They're not using that right now, they're not getting up to that minimum floor area ratio that we're requiring. But if at some point in the future, if they come in and do what we suggested, which is build a couple of office buildings for their satellite. Headquarters in, you know, northern part of the of the region. They may, they may achieve that minimum F A R for the site, in which case they could use those credits. And not have to transfer them at all, so because if we've retained what we needed in the regional growth center.
Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you, Chair Karen, I think Director Cotterman just answered my question. Uh which was, I'm just, uh first of all, I want to say, Senior Planner Lamb, thank you, I agree with Commissioner uh um Kurd that. That's the most clear um description of T D R I've seen yet, and I really appreciate it very much. Uh it's brilliant work, thank you, you made something pretty complicated, I mean, I understood the concept, but like the details. Uh much, much more understandable, I understand sort of this developer math, I appreciate that, but um. So I I understand it better now that we're just trying to make sure it sounds like, I'm just trying to clarify here. That that extra capacity is not squandered, that it goes somewhere. So we hit our targets for P S R C, and so you're doing the the analysis with the consultant to make sure that. It's tasty enough to someone to pick up and use someplace else, okay?
Exactly.
I understand it better now, is um. Appreciate that, just to to render some ideas about this in the future, I just want to make sure I understood it completely, so. Um and uh I'm not surprised that we have to kind of sweeten the pot with certain incentives to to make it work out, because as the packet says. Your, as you build more, your costs go up, you have to find that equilibrium, so anyway, it's really well explained, thank you for clarifying.
Yep, no, and uh that uh brings up a good point, I I glossed over, I I did tell you I was gonna uh mention the incentives that the. Consultant recommended, and I'll try to not find in my list, but um. Try to um remember those, so. Uh one for sure was parking and reductions, because obviously the the more parking. More cars that have to park, the the cost goes up tremendously, and it really, that's what was um killing the projects. And so uh he looked at a twenty percent reduction for. All of, for the entire project, okay, so using uh T D R credits, then he also looked at. A a reduction in parking for only the T D R units, but not for uh. The the other units that didn't use T D R, and and both of those incentives, and you know, made that um. That return uh curve jump uh favorably. The other one was allowing up to six stories of wood frame construction, which uh we are still negotiating and still getting. Um intelligence from our building official, it seems like there might be. and still getting intelligence from our building official. It seems like there might be some appetite for that using, I think it's cross laminated timber is an option. And gosh, what were the other ones? So the reduc, the reduction of parking, the increased height.
MFT and a couple of things.
Thank you. Thank you. MFT. And so with MFT generally, it's a good, so it's, it's actually good that we have our mandatory, I would say mandatory requirement, that's redundant. So we have those mandatory affordability levels, but actually that ends up being an incentive for MFT. And that's something that we need to look, consider through in our scenarios. Because we've, we've asked you before, do you want to allow developers to layer and stack these different incentives? And we got really good direction from you when we talked about our bonus FAR, which this is bonus FAR essentially. And you said you wanted deeper housing affordability and to see affordable commercial space. And so that's sort of where we're gonna try to take this as we look at, you know, the effects of MFT and allowing stacking and at what affordability levels. But like I said, we just, we haven't gotten far enough in the analysis on that part. We got some good insight from the pro forma stuff, but now we have to put those pieces of the puzzle together, so to speak. So. Yep. Good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Director Cotterman, you kind of piqued my curiosity on something where you talked about, you know, they, they have a plan to build a bus maintenance facility and they could conceivably use the remaining capacity for office structures sometime in the future. Is there a definition around sometime? I mean, that's slightly troublesome. So they could give you a, a facility master plan which shows these office buildings sometime and they don't appear for.
Well, they're, yeah, but they're not proposing anything at this point. What, where that came from is when they first approached us about the, the bus base and they said, you know, this is what we're, this is what we're going to build on the site. And we said, well, you don't meet our minimum development requirement. And they said, well, as you recall, they came to the planning commission and said, we're an essential public facility. We should be exempt. And they said, well, you are an essential public facility, but you're not exempt. And after we got done saying that to them five or six times, we suggested that they consider maybe adding some floor area ratio to the site, like add some office building space or something like that. And they indicated that was not part of their, their current planning, so they, they wouldn't propose that. But, but you're right, we, we don't want them to do that. We need some, you know, the, the credits and one of the things that is in that report that we didn't talk about tonight is there is a time limit on those credits, which is good in one sense for the reason you cite, but it also creates a little bit of concern from our standpoint, because we don't want that capacity to go away at any time either. So one of the things that we're talking to Sound Transit about is if, if there is a, if there is a sunset on those, then we need something in that interlocal agreement that says they can be renewed as long as needed. Either Sound Transit, he's used them in that 10-year period, or someone has used them in that 10-year period. And if not, if it hasn't all been used, then it needs to be extended so long as we need that additional capacity for our center designation.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on this item? All right. Well, thank you, Senior Planner Lamb. As you've heard from several commissioners, very interesting, very informative. We appreciate you bringing this topic to us and we look forward to hearing more about it in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yes, you too.
Good presentation and you got Kita Test right. So.
I eventually got it out.
Well, I, I have to tell you, the first time I, I tried to say Waukeahcom County, it came out Waukeahcom and I got a lot of laughter from my colleagues at that time.
There are some tricky ones.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Nathan.
All right. So moving along to unfinished business, I'll hit a really quick one first. We did at our last meeting pass a motion on the urban trees policy. I made a presentation to council on February 8th. It was quite brief, actually. We passed a motion, I read the motion and I thanked them. I, you know, that was the point. So they did hear that. They didn't act at that point. I know they talked about it again last night. Did they take any action at any point during that meeting after I faded away?
They did. They did. They did. They did agree to sign on to the letter, acknowledging that it had already been considered by the county council, but symbolically it was, it was important to sign on to the letter.
Okay. So our voice was, was heard and they acted. So thank you.
Yes.
Other unfinished business, would you like to speak to the docket?
Sure. I'll try not to take as long tonight as we did last night. But I would like to highlight some of the things that the, that the council did approve. They did approve the docket last night after some, some substantive changes and I will say very good discussion. I, I won't, I won't suggest that you watch all four and a half hours of it, but if there are certain parts and I don't know, I couldn't tell you what the timestamps are, but there was some very, very good, very thoughtful discussion on some of the key issues that we talked to them about. We had highlighted, in addition to the docket itself, we also highlighted a few things that we asked for their direction on. We got some good direction from them as well. We asked about missing middle housing. How, how much, how broadly did they want to apply that? And we shared that with you this evening. Also, we asked them about the affordable housing, whether that should, when we do parking reductions, should we automatically require affordable housing as we have in the past at the council's direction? This is something that I think I brought up at commission during one of your discussions on reduced parking a little bit ago. There was some, it wasn't unanimous, but they decided for now at least they'll continue with that policy so that where we do something that increases capacity and creates the opportunity for affordable housing, we want to include that mandatory provision. And then the council may decide on a case by case basis whether they want to do that. They, they were kind of torn between case by case or continue with the current policy. And again, I think because some of the council members are new, they haven't had all the discussion that the councils had in the past. They were looking for a little bit more information, but for now felt more comfortable just continuing with the status quo. But that, you know, that may change in the future. But they did talk about it and gave us some good, good direction on that. The other was just how, how much did they want us to talk about parking citywide? And look at some of the things and we brought up the addition that the commission had made to the list. In fact, I wanted to note that Chair Kiernan did part of the presentation last night. He gave a presentation on the the status of the 21 docket items and what the commission had accomplished last year, as well as the commission's input to the 22 docket. And I want to thank, thank you again, Mr. Chair, for taking the time to do that and doing a really good presentation and answering some, some questions from the council. I think it's important that they hear from, from the commission directly as well. So thank you for doing that. And he, and the chair did highlight the two items that the, the commission had added. And there was quite a bit of discussion by the council later on regarding parking. And so there were really two items in the docket. There are actually several items, the docket having to do with parking. I should back up a little bit. There were two that were a little bit bigger in scope. Let me put it that way. One was the, the one that the commission added with the wording that Vice Chair Kurt had developed and agreed to. And then the other was the one that was a deferral that had been carried over for a couple of years now, that really is a phase two parking study of the downtown. That was something that came out of the downtown plan. The phase one study was done and that was looking at, I think, just overall parking in the downtown, more of a, probably more of an inventory type of thing. And then the second phase was supposed to look at feasibility of doing things like a parking management organization or, or structure. So that has never been funded. That's a consultant project and that was never funded. So last night, the council directed us to develop the scope and come back with a proposal for a consultant budget to do that. They combined that with the, the new task that the planning commission had added. So those were merged. So that means we're going to be looking at not just the downtown, but best practices for parking overall throughout the city. But this year, we're just going to develop scope for that. Then if the council funds that consultant scope, that work will start in '23. So that was, again, good discussion on that one. And then the other one that we asked about was the interim parking provision that we have right now for, and this was put in place because of COVID two years ago. And it basically suspends the requirement for parking for eating establishments and allows them to use that parking for outdoor dining. And we've only had a handful, maybe five or six that have actually taken advantage of that throughout the city, most of them in the downtown. This is not the main street parking. That's, that's a whole different issue. Just want to be clear about that. And we asked them if, rather than renew this interim regulation again in June, when it comes up, do they want us to incorporate this into some of the parking work that we're doing now and just make it permanent? And they deferred. They would prefer to wait until we have to renew this and then talk about it at that time. So, which is fine. That's, you know, that's what we'll, what we'll do when that comes up again. We'll, we'll have to do it in May because it expires early June. So the other major change that they made, in addition to the, the parking and making that a higher priority and moving it up in the, in the timeline, was they swapped out hours for ADU. The ADU work, they sort of combined that with the, the missing middle project. And we said, we were already doing them in conjunction. So hopefully there's enough efficiency there that we'll still be able to do both. But we said, well, we'll do as much as we can within that context. And they took those hours and they transferred them to the tree updating of the tree regulations, the tree protection regulations. So that is the other project that we'll be taking on, starting later this year. So those were the, those were the main changes and the main issues that we asked for their direction on. I should note, there were three other things that we had, you, you may recall, we had suggested that they remove from the list because they were either no longer issues or they'd been on there so long that they didn't seem to be, still be a priority and they agreed to drop those. One had to do with proposed parkland dedications and bringing those to council. A second had to do with regulations pertaining to adult entertainment, which was really about the, the, they're called bikini barista stands. And then the third was one that the staff had added a few years ago about private streets and getting some guidance. And when we increased our standards for private streets, we suddenly saw that we were getting a lot fewer requests for private streets. So that issue sort of went away as well. And they agreed to drop those, those three. I think really didn't change much in terms of hours or priorities, other than the ones that I talked about. But again, really thoughtful, very, very helpful discussion. And it gave us, I think, a really good sense, well, two things. One is, it gave us a sense of what issues they're, they're most focused on and concerned about, which no real surprises there, but it kind of showed where there's not always consensus or even, you know, broad agreement necessarily, but there's at least consensus that it's an important issue, how we approach it, maybe a little bit different. And then the other was that we, we pretty much hit the priorities. I, you know, I, I think we got those pretty close. And, and they acknowledged that and said, yeah, these are the things that, that are important that we need to work on. They acknowledged the, the work that needs to be done on the comp plan this year, the foundational work. They were also very excited about the community engagement specialist being added to the staff and the work that we'll be doing with that. Sarah did a fabulous job on the presentation. She was nervous beforehand and just sounded like a polished professional. So that was, that was fun to see and they, they ate that up as I, as I knew they would. That's a really big part of the work that we're going to be doing going forward. And we had highlighted for them in the docket, and I don't think we included this in the docket that, that you had seen before. And thank you, Commissioner Gustafson, for suggesting we put it in the packet tonight. So you can see, this is what went to the council. And I'm still cleaning it up to reflect the changes the council made. So when I've got that done, I will send that back out to you with your next packet as well. So you can have that for your, for your scrapbook, if you will. So, Mr. Chair, if there's anything you wanted to add or anyone who was watching last night, if there's anything in particular that I missed or anything you'd like to know a little bit more about?
Well, they did. Talk a little bit about the potential for additional resources. I, I don't think they got too far on it, but they did recognize resource limitations and if they could wave a magic wand, you'd have more resources, but it's not that simple.
Yes.
So Commissioner Kurt.
Thank you. And yes, this is in the same vein. Seems like a lot of stuff is being pigeonholed into the comp plan update. And there's only so much time before that happens. And I'm wondering if community development has a plan to address all of this stuff. I mean, obviously it's just sort of like the, the stack on everyone's desk that you just set things for, for later. But it's, it's, it's getting larger all the time and I'm, I'm kind of concerned because I don't see if there's capacity to take on everything that needs to be done. It just seems so complicated and complex. Want some feedback.
And I, I appreciate that, Commissioner Kurt. I, I share your concern. And the way I've characterized it is we've hung a lot of ornaments on the, the comp plan update Christmas tree. And we keep adding ornaments to that and at some point it's going to topple over. So the, so two things in terms of how we would address it. I'm not overly concerned about it because it's really part of the process. When we go through the scoping process, it's meant to put all the ornaments on the tree and see what works and what doesn't. So it, it, at the end of that scoping process, we have to do a realistic assessment of, okay, what is it that we can actually accomplish with this update? First, what are the things that we have to do? So there are the, you know, the state mandated changes, like the, the climate change bill that we expect to pass, House Bill 1220 that already passed that will dramatically increase our workload for the, the housing element. There are other things that have, that have come up that, that we will need to include. The downtown countywide center designation, you know, we need to make sure that we've got something that addresses that. So those are just a few examples and we listed those already, the, the things that we already know. And I think we shared that with the commission as well. And then we'll see what the, what other things the commission or the council or the public wants to add to that. And some of them we may be able to combine. Some of them may be fairly straightforward. But there will likely be some things that we cannot do. And that'll be part of what we take to the council later this year and say, kind of like we just did with the docket, you know, these are all the things that could be done. These are the things we think we can do. And the other piece of that, the second part of it is, is I told the council last night, when the, the additional resource issue came up, we will be coming to them as part of the biennial budget process and requesting additional resources. And I don't know how much yet, but it, you know, at least one more staff person. And certainly a significant consultant budget. I expect that we'll be using probably shouldn't tip my hand, but, because I know some of the council members watch these meetings. But what we'll be talking about, in addition to transportation, that's already looking at what they need as far as the comp plan update. What we needed for the Canyon Park Plan, for example, was between $700,000 and $800,000. Now that was over about a three or four year period. We did a planned action EIS. It was a little more involved. But when you look at the scope and the things that we need to do as part of this comp plan update, I'm guessing we'll need upwards of $750 to $2 million. And that includes the environmental piece of it because I don't think we can get away with doing a supplement to the, to the environmental that was done for the 2015 plan. There's just too much of a change that we're looking at. So that's, that's my best guess at this point. And it is a guess, you know, I haven't done the, the work to really do a solid estimate on that. So I hope that allays some of your concerns.
It does. Yes, thank you. And I just want to kind of extend that keeping us appraised of these discussions and, and the workload, being really brutally honest about it. We can certainly, you know, not necessarily back you up because you probably have more say with the council than we do, but we can certainly show our support for community development when we see, I mean, we, we see more. I mean, we, we see more of the workload and just how critical these consultants are after legal challenges and everything. It just, it's very apparent to us. And so please feel like you can use this as a resource as well to advocate for more resources where it's needed.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It would not be appropriate for me to ask you to do that. But that is certainly always within your purview if you, if you wish to do that.
We'll be watching out.
Well, you did not ask in the past, but the commission did in the past
Yes.
pass a motion requesting additional resources on the retirement of of one staff member. And I would point that out to the other commissioners that we have done that in the past. And as we see this need, we should be forward looking and take an action as we see appropriate. I would agree with Director Cotman that relying on a past environmental review doesn't seem reasonable here. I think we're making some big changes. I mean, anyone who who looks around sees Bothell is changing and we're, we are all advocating for more changes and some of what we've done is pushed it while the compile will get it, the compound will get it. And I would hate to get then to the comp plan and say, oops, we don't have enough resources to get to all the things we said we would get to. So yeah, so let's keep that in mind. And as, as the budget, I'd ask if you brief us, if you would brief us on your budget request. So then if we are interested in weighing in, not putting you in, I recognize the last thing we want to do is put you in a difficult position, but we also would want to time our actions so that they could have an effect.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will ask you to remind me about that.
Because And that's a group ask, right?
Yes, yes. Well, no, I think it's a good idea actually because it certainly ties into the, the work program that the commission has and what support the staff can provide to you. So that you're aware of what we can and, you know, what we do have the capacity to do and what we don't. So no, I think that's entirely appropriate for us to do that. I'll just make a note to, to remember to do that when we, when we get that proposal developed.
Thank you. And we'll look forward to the replacing our proposed planning docket with the adopted planning docket.
Yes.
All right. Any other unfinished business?
Nothing for me, Mr. Chair.
Seeing none, then reports from staff. And we only have one staff left. Any, anything you haven't reported on thus far?
Just a couple of things, actually. Just to let you know that last week, I think that was last week, the council officially joined the King County Cities Climate Collaboration or K4C. With that long of a name, there's a reason we just call it K4C. And so they, they signed the interlocal agreement. They, I'm sorry, they authorized the interim city manager to sign the interlocal agreement and the mayor to sign the joint joint letter of, I can never remember the name of it. A joint letter anyway, that the, that the mayor signs. So they, they authorized that. Those have been signed and as I noted in the docket, we really haven't put any hours into into being that engaged, but we will be attending those meetings. And that'll probably be part of the resource request that we look at for, for next year's budget as well. So that was a big step and the council was very excited about that as well. Housekeeping amendments for 2021 that you saw just last month, I believe, from Senior Planner Lamb went to the public hearing last night and the council also adopted those. I think Dave Boyd mentioned earlier, a couple of webinars coming up, one tomorrow and another on next Thursday that the commission I know is aware of. So I won't belabor those. You're aware of those. And I believe that's all I had, Mr. Chair, unless there are any other questions for me this evening.
Commissioner Dodd.
Thanks. I was just gonna jump on the webinar bandwagon and remind everybody that there's the BOPOP and North Urban Human Services Alliance, if I'm getting those words right in the right order. Webinar tomorrow, but also WASHDOT is doing a Bothell Way widening workshop that Dr. Cotman emailed us all about on the seventh. And I think a lot of us might have a lot of feelings about how Bothell Way will be widened. So don't forget about that.
Thank you for that reminder. I knew there was another one that I was forgetting. Yes.
Commissioner Westerbeck.
Little note about that. I, I texted Commissioner Dodd about this because she was on the fence. If people are interested in the, we're calling it the, the state of Bothell, the the state of housing in Bothell for the BOPOP thing. If you register, you can, we'll record it and you could actually go back and watch it later, but you have to register. So even if you decide not to watch it or to attend it and you want to go to the, the highway widening thing, that's great. You can do both. But then if you wanted to watch it passively later, or we have someone who wanted to do, just let them know, just register, even if you don't show up. Because you want to have access to the recording otherwise. So there's that. Because I, we definitely want, we have BOPOP, still want people to go comment on the highway widening. And speaking of that, they, they reached out to us at BOPOP, not me and my planning commission facility, but as the BOPOPper and had a meeting, the, the company the city's hired or the, the company that the engineers for the city have hired to get to take in the, the public comment on the city, the highway 527 widening. Scheduled a meeting with me last week or was it earlier this week? I've already lost track. So we had input from various social media and stuff on where people struggled on that section of highway and I shared that with them. So anyway, just an update on that. So they, they, they knew BOPOP kind of was on into that kind of stuff. So they reached out to us.
And that reminded me, excuse me, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Westbeck just reminded me the, the provision about signing up in order to be able to watch the video later, that also applies to the one on the 24th, which is being put on by the UW. So if you're not able to, to attend that in person, you, you can still sign up and then the video will be available for a period of time afterwards. But only if you've registered for it.
Yeah, it seems to be the way it is. It's like, that's the only way you can get to it is if you register.
Okay. All right, we transitioned to reports from members. Other reports from members? Commissioner Kurt.
Thanks. This is a kind of a continuation of the last items that we just discussed. Do we need to do public noticing if all of us show up to WashDOT? I'm really interested.
No, thank you for asking, Commissioner Gustafson. I asked about that as well and reminded me that we actually got a an opinion from our deputy city attorney that it's because it's a webinar. As long as you're, as long as you all behave yourselves and don't conduct business, we're fine. So no, we're not going to, we're not going to post a notice of potential, of possible quorum for those.
Yeah, we're allowed to be in one place. We just can't chat, right? And you can't talk about planning commission related things.
That's, that's the basic rule. Yes. Yeah. The, and the idea is, you know, even the perception that the commission is conducting business outside of regular public meetings. That just, even if it's not happening, it just looks bad if it appears to be happening. So we do try to be a little cautious about that. This group is very conscientious about it. You know, I'm not, I'm not concerned. But thank you for asking that. That is something I, I posed back to the deputy city attorney and said, are we sure? We, we don't want to do that. And he said, yeah, we're fine. I said, okay.
Thank you.
In-person meetings, when those start back up again, we may change. I'm not sure, but we're good for now.
All right. Thank you. Others? Well, I, I had a meeting with the mayor just prior to this meeting. Five o'clock today, so I've been going a little bit. He, the, the mayor is seeking to meet with chairs of all the boards and commissions. And he didn't have an agenda. He just asked us two questions. Why are we involved and what excites us? And there were, I think he had two meetings. At this meeting was myself, library board, landmarks board, arts commission and council member Zorn. What, she's on the tax advisory.
Yes.
The tourism, you know, there's a, there's a tax, there's, there's a fee that's collected on hotel and motel room rental that's supposed to be used to stimulate.
Lodging tax.
Lodging tax. Thank you. Knocking up with that word. Thank you. Yeah, that's the one. She's on that.
Much more elegant than my long-winded description. Anyhow, she was representing that board. And we just chatted briefly that the mayor expressed a strong interest in hearing from the commissions, hearing if there were things that we wanted. So leading right into our motion on resources, we've been invited to, to make that. And yeah, it was just kind of a casual discussion. There, there are some intersections between what we do and what others do. The, the arts, she, the commission, the person in arts had some real interest in, you know, how we use public spaces. And I've got some background in public art from my working career. So we chatted there and, you know, landmarks also, you know, has to do with some of what we do. So there is an opportunity for the boards of commissions to work together as well. So I think it was a very worthwhile meeting, although I had to leave a little early to prepare for this one. So, but it was good. So.
And the council has added to every agenda now, they have a standing item for reports from boards and commissions. So periodically, if, you know, that, if there's something that, that the commission wants to convey to the council, the chair is welcome to come and do a presentation during that, during that time. We just need to know ahead of time.
Sure. Carrying over it, my agenda and wondering whether that's something we should have as a standing item, just soliciting if there's anything we want to put before the, the council. I see some heads nodding. So we can add that as a standing item and if there's nothing, we can just move past it. But it can just remind us that if there is something, I'm always more than happy to speak for the commission or if one of you are passionate about an item, certainly you can speak on our behalf after we discuss that. So I think it would be good to, to get I don't mean to imply at all that Director Cotman doesn't represent us well. But I think having the, the independent voice from the commission is also got value. So well, why don't we talk about it?
I, I would agree with that, Mr. Chair. And it's not my role to represent the commission. So it's, it's, it's my role to report what the commission has said, but not to necessarily advocate for your position. So.
And it seemed that was, that was the spirit of that sort of leaving that, tabbing that at the end of the meetings when they brought that up two or three councils ago, which was to open up that communication line and make it a little more fluid. Which would be coming from us. So I think it's great.
All right. So we'll, we'll do that then. Any other reports from members? All right. Well, seeing none, I think we've reached the end of our meeting tonight. There being no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Dodd?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I will second.
Second and third. All in favor? So, so we will adjourn the meeting of the BOPOP Planning Commission, February 16th meeting at 9:04 tonight. Our next meeting will be March 2nd. We'll look forward to seeing you all then.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Head off.
Thanks, everyone.
See you in March, which is a real month. It's going to happen soon.
It'll be warmer.
On Thursday.